Hey, well, welcome, everybody. It's May 10th. Happy May. Happy belated Mother's Day to everybody. As Michelle said, I'd like to call the regular city council meeting of May 10th to order at 6:01. And ask that Alex, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance again? Ask everybody to stand for Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm glad you got that right, Jamie, because I just looked at your lips and went along with you.
Okay, Ms. Jones, if you'd please call the role.
Yes, and please remember to let me know where you're attending the meeting at. Councilmember Cousins.
Attending from Dexter, Michigan.
Councilmember Fisher.
Yeah, I'm present and am attending from Alma, Michigan.
Councilmember Griffin.
Yep, present remotely from the city of Dexter, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Councilmember Hubbard.
Present, attending remotely from Dexter, Michigan.
Mayor Keough.
Present from my home in Dexter, Michigan.
Student rep Alex Gilbert.
Present remotely from Webster Township.
And student rep Bella Malik.
She indicated she was going to be late this evening.
Okay, okay, I'll kind of watch and see when she comes in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Jones. So the, you'll note on the agenda that the next item relates to the appointment of filling a vacancy. And I wanted, I have a memo in the packet and I wanted to go through the memo. Typically, we've filled the vacancy at the start of a meeting similar to those that are elected. We do that before the meeting so the person can participate in the meeting if there's consensus. I'm not sure that based upon some of the emails I've seen and things I've heard over the last couple of days or the weekend that there's consensus. But I'd like to go through what I've done in the process and then allow for some discussion before I put a formal nomination out there. What I was planning to do under step five. So everybody is familiar that Julie Knight stepped down. She announced, under council comments on March 8th, that she was going to be leaving us effective March 31. Few days later in that week, she submitted an official letter that wrote that out. So we accepted her and thanked her at her last council meeting on March 22nd. I think she actually participated in one more thing with us, a workshop, if I'm not mistaken, a week or so later. The all committee workshop, maybe it was. So effectively, her last day on council was March 31 per her letter. The, the city charter talks about filling the vacancy on council within 60 days, unless the term that's expiring is within 90 days of the day of, they have offices vacated. And, or 90, within 90 days of an election. And so in this case, there's 18 months until the next election. So we effectively have, by my count, from March 31st, we have 60 days to fill the vacancy in accordance with the charter. When Julie announced her resignation on March 8th, I believe it was the interim city manager put the process for filling that vacancy in the packet on March 22nd. And after a little bit of discussion at that meeting, it was decided originally, we had, we had gone forward with the process prior to council talking to it about it a little bit. We had initiated an email saying there was a vacancy and that we were going to accept applicants, I think, through, it was either April 2nd or April 9th, but after talking with council, we decided that, we all decided that we wanted to get the, the notice of the vacancy into the newsletter that everybody was going to receive. So we agreed to delay the, or to extend the, the ability of people to submit their letters of interest until April 16th at 4 o'clock. People might wonder, you know, what is my role in the process? Why is my role in the process here? Section 305 of the charter lists a number of the mayor's duties that were envisioned by the founders of our charter or the drafters of our charter. But the last duty that's there is pretty general and says that there could be other duties prescribed by the city council. The council rules that we adopted and have adopted over the years lay out some of those, some of those duties. In this case, filling the council vacancy, the mayor or the presiding officer is asked to get involved and essentially make a nomination under step five. Under step four, I'm supposed to announce all the applicants and provide copies of those applications or letters of intent. So if you look at the process that's there, it does follow guidance as the charter indicates. And it is, it does lay out my task or my role in this process as something that was, I will admit, generally described, but on purpose, purposely described to take things like this and assign them to the mayor if council wishes. So we vacated, you know, the step, the eight-step process that's there. The vacation occurred at the end of March, step one. We provided the notification in the newsletter. That was step two. We received five letters of intent. You know, by the 16th, that's step three. Step four, all those, all those letters were intent and the names were advertised in our last meeting. And then I've spent the last couple of weeks, actually a little, a little longer than two weeks, talking to different people that submitted their applications. But councilmember Griffin emailed all of us this morning, said she had a concern with the process. I've talked to councilmember Hubbard, who informed me that there might be another council member that had a concern about the process. So I'm not, I don't believe that the people that volunteer their time are political footballs. I'm not going to put a name out there if people aren't supportive of the process because they're just going to vote no because they think somebody's got a position on one side or of an issue or another. I don't believe that's good government. I don't believe that's good for Dexter. This, this process has been out there 17 years. I looked it up. It goes back to April of 2004. I was part of the council that, that voted this in place. It may not be a perfect process, but it's one we've used for 17 years. And most recently, in November of 2018, just two and a half years ago. So it was my goal to help us meet the 60-day deadline. And I was pretty transparent about all the steps that were going to be taken and what needed to be done to do that. But I'm going to ask council if they have some concerns to state those now. And maybe we can talk about what we should do next before voting on anybody or maybe delaying a vote on anybody. If you're not comfortable with it, I'm sitting here before you to try and say I have done my best sincerely to try to pick the most qualified candidate. Julie had over eight years on our council and sat on the boards of other township boards, Dexter Township's board. And in my opinion, there was one pretty clear choice for this based upon experience, no different than how we're trying to choose our next city manager or put people on, on other boards and positions, like boards and committees. We want the people that are best prepared to participate and but I guess I'll open it up to council to see if there's concerns. And, you know, if there are, then I guess we got to schedule a workshop to talk about it because I think it's going to take some time. It's not an easy item to walk through if people are thinking that wholeheartedly this should go a different direction. And I'm hoping that the fact that none of you raised a concern six weeks ago is not related to the fact that who I recommended. If, if it is, I'm disappointed in that. But I'll let you, I'll give you, I've said my piece. I'll give you, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not upset if we slow it down. There's no penalty for missing the 60-day requirement in the charter. Nobody punishes us except ourselves. And my, my goal in everything we do has been to do it well and to try and be organized. And if, if we need to stop now to get organized, I'm willing to do that. But I want you to know that up until not that long ago, I didn't have any sense that there was an issue, although I didn't get many responses to my email on Wednesday where I asked, or I, where I sent out the recommendation. So maybe my spider sense was twinging a little bit. So I will, I will recognize councilmember Griffin, she raised her hand. Jamie, thanks for waiting.
Yep, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate your introduction. I think it makes sense given I sent the email this morning to, you know, give a bit more context to that. I want to make it perfectly clear that none of this was motivated by the particular nominee at all, that there is a chance I would support the person you had intended to appoint this evening. There's also a chance I would support other nominees. To be honest, when I was looking through the packet, the thing that first struck me was that the appointing was going to happen in the agenda before there was even a chance for non-arranged public participation. And that struck me as, hmm, I, I would have liked to at least been able to hear from the public, those people who have been following along, who maybe had something to say about who was being nominated. So that sort of sent me down the, okay, why is it this process and where does that originate from? So, you know, looking back to the charter, looking at our council rules and then seeing in our council rules that our goal is to review them and adopt them within 60 days after new members join council. Recognizing that we've had a couple of opportunities to talk about rules, but we haven't formally adopted anything. I wanted to be sure that, you know, and then looking around at how other communities do things. I wanted to make sure we at least had the conversation about whether or not this is the process we want to follow, given that it's something that's outlined in our rules and not specifically in our charter. So it's something that any individual council would be able to modify if they wanted to. Understanding that it's something that's been around for a long time, but also understanding that I don't want to then get into a position where I'm making an approval of something. And then later on, I'm called out to say, well, you didn't have a problem with it then, or you had no problem approving something then. So I recognize that the time, I could have given more timing. It's not like I had this, these thoughts fully conceptualized and I was sitting on this idea. I think like many of you, like I said in the email, we have a lot going on. I get the agenda and I do what I can to focus specifically on that agenda. Something as if they're floating by on the agenda. If it's not until we're making a decision, maybe I'm, you know, making myself aware of it and setting it aside. So, you know, again, this is not about any particular person. This is truly about the process. And what I'm interested in hearing from other council members is would they be interested in revisiting at least that piece of the council rules before we make this decision? I personally would like to see some other process where we're either, you know, so the city of Detroit, their process is all counts, you know, once the applications are received, all council members submit up to three names that they want to be interviewed. Then the entire council interviews them in public meetings. And then there's a ranked choice voting to sort of whittle down the group of people. You know, and I think the Dexter School Board does something that's similar. So I guess, you know, that's my thought. You know, I am aware of the timeline. We have a work session Wednesday. We would have a meeting again in two weeks. I guess if it's something that we can decide we're okay waiting until the next regular meeting or we, right, we have a work session. I'm open to all those things. And again, I do want to emphasize this is not about any particular person. There are several of the people who applied that I would be happy to support. It's really truly just wanting to check in with the rest of council if this is the process that they wanted to follow.
And Jamie, I'm, I'm okay if that's what we need, you know, you know, the, when I think back, when I think back to the start of the year where we tried to get the the goals and the rules out in front of everybody, you know, nobody gravitated towards those issues. And maybe I should have pushed for putting that on the agenda to approve, but I thought there were a few lingering things that we wanted to make some changes on. You know, that, that sort of, that we've sort of adopted, if you will, even going forward as a group, you know, the idea of disclosing a conflict of interest under approval of the agenda. You know, we've, we've added that into our workflow, even though we haven't officially put it into our, our formal rules. Nobody seems to object to that. And I think it's a good suggestion and we're, you know, we're working towards that. So you know, I just, I just wanted everybody to know that, you know, it takes effort to do this. And you know, it's something that I've taken seriously for, I've had to take seriously twice during my time as either village president or mayor. This is now the third time. And you know, with any appointment, I mean, I spend the time to talk to that person usually in face-to-face if I can, which hasn't been the easiest over the last 18 months or whatever that we've been dealing, not that, it's not 18 months, but you know what I'm saying with the COVID thing. And it's, it's difficult for me to get to this point and then have it, you know, not be able to go forward when I hear that there's things out there. And I think others, I'm interested to hear what others have to say because some of what I've heard is, you know, through word of mouth and that's always a difficult thing too. So I'm trying to give the benefit of the doubt to each of you. I don't interview on any issue. I talk about what you've done, how you, how what you've done in other parts of your life applies. You know, or may apply to this situation. Try to be very impartial with, with that. And so I thought I saw another hand up. It may have just gotten taken down. Was there another hand somewhere? You know, I, the other thing is I want to say, and I didn't say it earlier, we are definitely stronger with seven than six. Okay, the, you know, the entire, the entire intent of the charter and government is to have an odd number of people on the board, you know, on purpose. And we've, we've done very well over the years with seven and it's my intent to work to get to seven. So Zach, thanks for putting the hand up there. I'll let you go next, sir.
Yep. So I'll say I've really struggled with this. It's difficult for me to ignore the results of an election that we're still in the shadow of where there is a large candidate pool and not using that guidance from our electors, from our citizens for selecting an opening. And I know folks have said, well, Zach, why didn't you raise this objection last time when we pointed a replacement for Mr. Tell? I did contact the next runner-up at that time and it was about a year after the election, so it wasn't as fresh. And in that case, there were only five people on the ballot and the next runner-up wasn't interested. So I, I do struggle with this immensely and I, it's difficult for me to stray from the will of the voters in that we've had a fresh election. Similar to, I, I don't agree with the, the charter amendment that we've had, but I voted against buying a wood shipper with the trade-in because I think that's consistent with, with what the voted change was. And I haven't brought it up previously at meetings because Mr. Cousin has expressed the same thing. And I don't always see benefit to piling on when our meetings run long already. So that's, that's my piece.
Zach, what would you do? Just curious. So, you know, in, when, in your, in your, in your comment about the prior time reaching out to the first runner-up, which was probably Carson.
Yep.
So when you, why don't you go to the second person then? The second runner-up? I mean, what, what's, where does that end? I mean, if you don't, if, what if you don't have a runner-up? And then you still need a process.
Yeah, exactly. And that's, that's
But, but I, I think it's also important that if, you know, elections are different than this. In an election, you get, you either get elected or you don't get elected. It's, it's not like there is a prize for the first runner-up. That's taking nothing away from all those that have ran or come in, you know, first runner-up. I'm just saying that that's not, you know, that, that, I mean, most people would say that if you didn't get elected, you, you know, you didn't get, you didn't accomplish the goal. So why should our process reward it?
They all got stickers at least.
Fair enough.
Oh, yeah. So those of you who may or may not know me, I, I like to play and ask a lot of these questions myself. I think if I were to put my rubric down, you know, if there are only four people, it's probably not wise to get that fourth person. And I was the fourth person out of four in a spelling bee. So I certainly didn't get any prize for that. I got a day off of school while everyone else went to a proper spelling bee. If there are five or six, then I can see going to the first runner-up. Going to a second runner-up if the first doesn't want that, that would probably require a deeper ballot pool than just the five or six people. Again, because you mentioned this. If there's someone, if there's a large pool and there's someone who almost finished, I'm not articulating it well, but that's
No, I, I understand what, I understand what you're saying and I appreciate the thought you're giving to it. I, I'm struggling with, you know, so how long does the first runner-up get the first opportunity? Does it, within the first six months? And what if it occurred a year later? Are you still, you still in the, you still get the nod? You know, some of those, those are some of the follow-up questions I would, I would have.
Yeah, yeah.
On that type of, of thought process.
And that's something where if I had to put some pen to paper, it definitely passed a year, you're halfway to the next election. I think the previous one is, is, it's very clear case that it holds less sway. The closer you get to it, the more sway it holds. One thing that I probably put in my own internal calculus is, was, is there a vote gap? So if like there's the top three and then the first runner-up was way below that, then I may put less emphasis on it. But if it's, you know, close gap, I may extend it nine months or something like that. Although it's not a satisfying answer, but that's, I've been struggling with internally.
Yeah, and it just, it just becomes very difficult and very subjective over what, you know, your calculus versus mine or somebody else's, right? And I'm not saying we just differ necessarily. I'm just saying that becomes a very complicated process when you go to that level of of thinking. And, and I, I guess, I guess what I'm, what I'm, what I want to ask is, so is, is this something that we want to carry on with six people on? And work out? Or do you want, or am I hearing people say, we're happy to stay at six until we can get a process? Because the risk is, the risk with six is that we don't, we don't, we may not get a process different than the one we have. I'm not saying that, that would fall that way, but it could fall that way. And I, you know, we've got, we've got the city manager decision coming up. We've got the 3515 broad, which we've worked very hard on for the last, you know, 90 days. We're coming out of our referendum period here pretty soon. Next meeting is a big meeting. So anyway, just throw that out there that, you know, if we, if we decide not to add a seventh tonight, we're going to be without that seventh for a little while. Wah?
Thanks. I guess I just want to say that, you know, I am all for discussing this and, you know, any other issue, but we are so far down the path with this now. I see a couple of major problems, in my opinion. One of them is if we had a work session now with the six of us on this, how do we have an honest, like, discussion of all the possibilities we could consider for future? When we've got these people who have already taken all the time and energy to apply and put themselves out there for this? Are we just saying, oh, sorry, we have to start over because we can't discuss this? If we're trying to tailor it to the people we already have. And I don't think it's fair to them for us to basically say, oops, we decided at the last second that we don't think this is good. We got to start over. I just, I don't think that that's the way we want to treat people. It's not the way I want to treat people.
Thank you. Other council member follow-up? Jamie, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I recognize, we haven't heard from Paul, so I'd be happy to defer to him if he has something to say. I was, you know, just going to follow up that, you know, per our rules, we still could end up without somebody tonight. I mean, we do have an option. There is an option where it's not unanimous approval. So it, you know.
I, I'm sorry, I don't have a hand.
Oh, go ahead, Donna.
Not sure why. So if I cut somebody off, I apologize. I think that this is pretty, pretty quick in terms I don't like the process. And I can't, I cannot get out of my head that this has something to do with other issues. And trying to get them, trying, Jamie, I don't mean you personally. I mean, I can't believe that the group of people that want to change this right now, that there's nothing in there about how various issues would be handled. And so I think that we should move ahead the way we are and I'm happy to discuss the process. You know, if this is not good, I don't see where the holes are, but I'll be glad to talk about it. So that's my opinion.
Paul, anything to add?
No, I'm, I'm trying to think it all through and get it in some, some order here, but I expressed the other evening that I thought that we had talked about this and somebody said, no, we hadn't. And I remember now what happened because there were a couple of us that did talk about it the last time. And that's where I was, there was a council, there was two other people, two other council members that did that. But I'm not sure I like the process at all, where the mayor makes that selection. I guess there's, there's, there could be other ways, but what would be wrong with just having the candidates apply? And we, we take a ballot and we decide who we have or a rank decision like they do in Detroit or other places. I don't see anything wrong with that either, okay? In the back of my mind or in the front of my mind, I can say, well, the mayor chose this person because of an issue or he's a friend or whatever. I prefer not to go there, but I just wonder if that's true with, with everybody and every mayor that will ever have. I'm not sure that personality does make a difference in making our decisions and how we feel about things. So I would be happy to try it again Wednesday night or whenever, but I feel like we've got some new information here. We got to make sure that we do it right. And And. I have no problem of delaying it for. Two days.
Well, in two days, we're gonna talk about the. Water and street funds, water sewer and street funds.
I know that, but we could put this, add this to the agenda with eighteen hours, we can change the agenda.
Yep, okay. Is that, is that what people want to do is talk about that also on, on Wednesday?
I would be fine with that. I don't know if that's something that has to go to a vote or needs to be moved or how that works.
No, it doesn't. It's just, I'm just trying to get a consensus of how people want to spend their time.
As I remember, so. Sewer and water funds are the. Have the least discussion. In our past. Budget hearings, but. People generally clamor to be on the agenda or clamor to be heard about it, but maybe we'll this time, I don't know.
Okay, all right, then we'll plan on talking about it on Wednesday as part of the agenda. We'll pick it up from there then. I'm gonna move on to approval of the minutes if that's okay.
I'll make that motion.
We have three sets of minutes. That's approval of the city council work session from April twenty-first, regular city council meeting on the twenty-sixth and the city council work session on the twenty-eighth. So that's motion by Fisher. Second by, was it Griffin? Thank you, Jamie. I looked down and didn't see it, heard it. Okay, um. Comments on the minutes? Ms. Fisher, I'll let you go first since you made the motion.
No, I, no, I didn't. I went through twice and I didn't see a thing.
Okay. Jamie?
My only comment was on page ten. I know we're ironing out this conflict of interest thing, so we're under E. Council member Michelle's indicated that he would abstain on the consent agenda due to a conflict of interest as his employer is still listed in bills and payroll. I think it makes sense to indicate who the employer is. I, I would defer to Zach or I'm curious to know what other people think.
I think you're right, Jamie.
I, I put the A in CWA.
So I guess I would add a conflict of interest as his employer, comma, CWA or Carlet, whatever, just specify that.
Okay.
That was all I had.
You can do that.
Okay, other council member comments on the minutes? Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve the three sets of minutes, please.
Yes. Michelle?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries on item C. Six zero. We are down to prearranged participation. And I believe we have Tom Colas from Miller Canfield on the line today. Is that correct, Justin and Tom?
Yep, I'm here. That's correct.
Dustin, I'll let you give whatever introduction you'd like beyond that. As to purpose, please.
Sure, so for your next meeting, you'll be asked to consider. The resolution to authorize the issuance of bonds for the thirty-five fifteen Broad Street purchase. A draft of that, that full resolution is included in your packet, along with an item for thirty-five fifteen, a little bit later in the agenda. Tom had a, had a. Timing conflict today, so I wanted to be able to, to give an, an opportunity for him to be on the agenda. So that way, if anybody had any questions or wanted to discuss anything about the resolution or the bonding process. Tom could be here to be, to help answer those questions.
Okay, Tom, do you wanna just roughly walk us through what's there briefly, or you wanna just go jump straight to questions? How do you want to proceed?
Actually, if you don't mind, I'll just take a, a minute or two, just kind of walk through the purpose of the resolution, kind of what's in it.
I think that, I think that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, if there's specific questions, happy to take them.
So we're on page sixty, we're on page sixty-two of the packet, I think, or sixty? Okay, you're up there, okay.
Yeah, so there's actually, the resolution is actually about an eighteen page resolution. Most of it, there's two major forms that are built into the resolution. The substance is really about. Five to six pages, but the idea here is this authorizes. Issuance of bonds in a amount not to exceed two point five million dollars. For the purpose of, you know, acquiring the site and the facility and making renovations and furnishings to. To the site that's been discussed. Remember, council initiated the process of doing a notice of intent back at their meeting in March. Where that notice was published, notice of intent was published in the paper. This is now the second step. That council would consider and actually authorizing the issuance of the bonds. So again, it would authorize a single series of bonds in a amount not to exceed two and a half million. We would refine that number to the exact dollar amount we need prior to actually selling the bonds. So we authorize a two point five million not to exceed, and we may ultimately, that might be the number that we need, but. There is some flexibility in reducing that number if necessary. Obviously, we couldn't go above the two point five million dollars. So section one really kind of lays out the structure when principal and interest is paid. These bonds will be twenty-year maturity, so will be subject to prepayments. After the first ten years. So we build that into the resolution. When we sell these to the bondholders, they'll. Understand that they're buying bonds that can be subject to redemption. Early. If the city so desires to do so in the future. The resolution provides for the, the bonds will be signed by the mayor and clerk, seal of the city, put onto the bonds. It selects a paying agent. U.S. Bank National Association will be the paying agent, transfer agent. They're the, they're the entity that will actually facilitate payment of the bonds, the bondholders. So that the city is not actually cutting checks individually to individual bondholders. These bonds will actually be limited tax pledge, general obligations of the, of the city, so. In essence, the city is pledging its existing funds to repayment of debt service, in generally, the general fund in particular. So the city does not have the ability to levy additional taxes outside of its charter limitation to support these bonds. So the bondholders know that. There's a limited amount of funds that the city can raise to pay debt service on the bonds. It establishes a couple of funds, a debt retirement fund, that's to use to pay. To pay the bonds and also a construction fund, so the, once the proceeds are received from the. From the purchaser, they'll go into the construction fund and then use to acquire the site and make, and make the renovations, the facility. The form of the bonds is set forth in the resolution. The form of notice of sale, so these bonds would be sold pursuant to what's called a competitive sale process, meaning that. If authorized, then we would actually. Publish a notice in the bond buyers and national publication. That'll indicate that the city would receive bids on the bonds at a particular time and a particular date, and then we review the bids and award to the bid. That produces the lowest true interest cost. That's actually established by state law, so to the extent we utilize this method. We're gonna, you know, the city is required to actually, if they're gonna accept any bids, it has to accept the lowest bid that produces the lowest true interest cost. So the form of the bonds, the form of that notice is actually set out in the resolution. That's kind of a, it's a seven pages of that resolution is the form. That goes into the bond buyer to actually sell the bonds. Just a couple other final things at the end of the resolution. These bonds are tax exempt, they're intended to be tax exempt, so. The city covenants to maintain the tax exemption to the best of its ability. And then there's also some additional authorizations for filing. Some filings need to be made with the Michigan Department of Treasury. So certain authorized officers are authorized to make those filings. And sign various closing documents in connection with the actual bond issue. And then ultimately, it establishes hiring of Miller Canfield, my firm as bond counsel. Baker Tilly as financial advisors to the city. So that's kind of the whole resolution in summation. Happy to take any questions.
Council have any questions? Bond market good now?
Bond market is still very strong, yep.
Zach has his hand up.
Oh, sorry, didn't see it. Go ahead, Zach, please.
Yep. How would this look different if a portion of the building were used for commercial rental? So it's not to a nonprofit or government entity?
Yeah, so we, we've had some discussions with, with inner city manager and about, you know, kind of the. How this process works, so there's different, you know, typically when we're issuing bonds, they're for governmental purposes and use exclusively for that purpose. Now, to the extent there are funds that are contributed to the project. We could allocate those to those portions of the facility that could potentially be. Utilized for non-governmental activities, so what we can do, allocation. We can do an allocation of those funds to those other purposes and still maintain the tax exempt status of the bonds.
Okay, so basically if we bring enough cash to the table. We can use the same one. The same resolution and all that stuff.
Correct, yes, exactly right. Yep, that's exactly right.
All right. Is there anything in this language? Bounding or binding rather, this, these bonds? To the thirty. To the, to the project on Broad Street, or is this something that could be used for any other? Bond purpose in the city future?
Well, this, this resolution and the notice, so the notice had it limited to, you know, acquiring a facility. It doesn't identify. The location, so it could be used for, you know, again, the idea is for use for city offices. So we couldn't, the city couldn't use this authorization for, for example, you know, provenance to the water system. It would only be for basically city offices. Where pursuant to the notice of intent in the bond resolution. They would only be, they could only be used for those purposes.
All right, and my last question, I thank you for your time is. There's still a lot of information. Coming into us about the, the facility we're looking at. Once this resolution is adopted, is that the final go where? That's going out there to New York and these are being issued? Or ought we? To pursue, if, if there are unanswered questions, do we need to wait before issuing this if we don't? Have enough information to purchase the property rather late?
So you control the timing, right? So the, the resolution makes the authorization, but we don't, it doesn't trigger a, a. Publication of that notice immediately, so. The, the city staff and administration can control the timing as to when we actually sell the bonds. There is a preliminary schedule that's put together, but. Again, that's preliminary, it can be changed. And the city controls that schedule, so to the extent that there's more information that needs to be gathered. We can certainly wait. We, basically the financing team moves at the direction of the city as to. When you want to actually get into the market, sell the bonds, because we'll need a couple of weeks, kind of lead time. To get the notice published, get it out there. At least there's a seven day requirement prior to the actual sale that notice has to be published, so. There's some time associated with doing that, but again. The city controls that schedule, so this doesn't automatically trigger sale of the bonds.
Okay, I'm all set, thank you.
But on, on the flip side, if we do want to buy thirty-five fifteen, then in order to meet the, the purchase schedule for that facility. Then we do need to, to be hitting these deadlines. And, and specifically those that have been laid out in the packet.
Yep, unless we ask for an extension and bring additional earnest money.
Correct.
Okay, thanks, Zach. Good questions. Other council members? Paul, I'm looking at you. I don't see a pencil up, so I'm gonna, around, I don't see yellow hands up on the screen. Tom, that was very helpful. Okay, I'm gonna conclude this portion of prearranged to see no further questions on. On the process. Tom, thanks for joining us.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, we're down on page two of the agenda, to approval of the agenda. Remembering that if anybody's got a conflict, we asked that you stated here, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Donna Fisher, I see your hands up.
Yes, I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, motion by Fisher?
I'll second.
Second by Griffin, thank you both. Any conflicts to disclose?
I'm conflicted, but I don't have a conflict of interest.
Fair enough. Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve the agenda.
Yes, Hubbard?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Kio?
Yes. Motion carries, thank you. We have no public hearings under item F, so we're down to item G, non-arranged participation. This is a first spot of two on the agenda where citizens and those that are attending the meeting can raise their hand and, and speak. Individuals are limited to five minutes. We ask you to state your name and address. Is there anybody that would like to speak this evening? If you happen to have called in, you can use star nine, otherwise, please use the. Hand feature at the bottom of the screen. I see Sanam has raised her hand and. And then Donna Fisher's hand is also up, so we'll start with Sanam.
No, I took it down finally. Oh, no, I didn't.
Okay.
Sorry.
Welcome.
Thank you, Sanam Arab, six eight nine six, Wellington Drive. Good evening, everyone. I wanted to make a couple. Comments as, as a citizen tonight. Joining you. Based on what I heard the earlier conversation. On the process for. Filling the vacancy for the city council. As well as the survey that went out on. Dexter Forum and other places, I believe, on, on behalf or council member Griffin put it up. And I kind, I, I answered that survey. I just have some, some concerns the way. I heard the conversation tonight and also that, that, that survey was put up. I, my concerns is really about changing the process. At the middle of. This already happening. And that the survey questions were very. Specific to. Have the benefit of one candidate versus possibility of communicating really a. Cohesive or a process change. I, I know some of the things I'm gonna say, some of the council members have, have brought it up, but. Before that, I do want to say that this is by no means. An attack on any of the candidates that put their names up. I know specifically for one of them, at least that both my fiancee and I have worked with. The Miller family in variety of capacities with different members. For decades now, so. We always admired their dedication and. Participation in the community. What I'm concerned is that. Where. First of all, the process. Has started, people have applied. I'm one of them, but I'm not speaking in that capacity. But we applied based on a process that very much was described to us and we had read. In any position and any process, if. The. Committee decides to change the processes, I would assume that this whole thing will start all over. The other part that is very concerning for me, and it was a couple of questions in the survey, is this automatic. Appointment of someone who might be the runner up. Every time we have an election, we have three people up. We could have four applicants, we can have three applicants, we can have an applicant who has over and over. Runs and might not get the position. runs and might not get the position or be elected. At some point, they have a chance of being on the council because somebody might have stepped down for a variety of reasons. I am just concerned with this idea of the runner up should be automatically appointed to the council in that sense. If runner up decides to run two or three times or four times or five times and they don't get the votes needed, at some point, that means that the will of the people of Dexter was that somebody else should be on the council. Now, if the runner up wants to run every time and eventually somebody steps down and it's their point to be, is that will of the people of Dexter? What if there only a few votes given to the runner up? Is that is still the will of the people of Dexter? I feel that a process had started from a citizen's perspective, listening to many council members and the conversation. I have to say that my feeling is that unfortunately, a short term gain and one issue, it seems to be overshadowing what is the greater good? And what is the greater impact for for Dexter? I don't have a problem if the process is something, you know, whether the mayor makes a nomination and the council discusses and votes on it, or it's a ranking process or such. But I do have a problem with automatically putting somebody in the in that seat just because they had run in the past and ne- never got the enough votes of the people to actually have that season in an election. It is just, I I have to say, listening to to that and seeing your survey coming out right at the middle of those process. It it was very sad to see this dynamic. I I felt that we are a community and we participate as a community. And it seemed that this time, short term gains are clouding some judgments. Thank you.
Thanks, Sanam. Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak this evening? Justin, am I missing anybody?
I don't see any hands.
Okay, thanks for your assistance on that. Okay, thanks against Sanam. Move on to item H. Communications. We have our upcoming meeting list in the packet. Does anybody have any comments or questions related to the meeting list? On page nineteen of our packet. Ms. Griffin.
Yep, I think the zoning ordinance subcommittee update committee is missing from May seventeenth. Somebody else can just confirm that. So it says zoning board of appeals canceled.
Oh, sorry. No, I looked at the date and just thought zoning. No, you're right.
Yeah, but I think that's the
Is that the next meeting is the seventeenth?
It got rescheduled to the seventeenth. I think it's just a matter of the confirmation not getting from myself to Justin in time for the packet.
Okay, Ms. Griffin, any other comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you. We'll get into our first report tonight from our public services superintendent. Welcome, Dan. I think I saw you on here somewhere.
Can you hear me, Sean?
I sure can, sir. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Good evening, council. I provided you with a two week written report. And then also, I'd like to discuss some ongoing projects that we're also working on. The ongoing projects we're working on is the Second Street Water Main and Sidewalk Project. I know you're not going to probably see that in your packet for a while, but I just want to let you guys know that we're working with OHM, going through the steps of the process, we can get that dialed in as we go forward. Also, this this week on the fourteenth, we're going to be doing a walkthrough of the Dexter Crossing Reservicing Project. To get a better idea, I know it's been on the table for a long, long time, but I'd like to get myself and my staff on board going forward, what it's going to look like for the residents, everybody in there. Obviously, we've been doing a lot of budget talks, looking at the the year end coming up for a current budget, but also looking out for the next budget that's coming up that I think we're going to be talking about on Wednesday. Last council meeting, I talked to you a little bit about going out and doing sewer manhole inspections. We didn't start them until this morning. We've got two people on that currently. We got about two hours into it and one of the manholes that we looked in, it was Mill Creek School. And we noticed that it was starting to flood a little bit, so we contacted the building ground superintendent for schools and avoided a sewer backup. That's it for my updates. Is there any question on those? Any questions on those?
Ms. Griffin.
Yep, thanks. And I had one question on, if I can find it, page twenty one. Just to familiarize myself with the numbers underwater and the backwash numbers. Why the big change from the week before to the, what does that number represent and why the two times difference between the two numbers?
What we do is we we measure how much iron is coming out of them filters on a on a weekly basis, and that determines how long we have to backwash them. The longer we have to backwash them, the more water that has to go through them to get them to where we need them to be to keep the iron levels down throughout the city's distribution system.
Okay, so it's water coming out to correct something. Got it. Okay, thank you.
Zach?
Yep, not exactly tied to this, but as has been discussed at budget workshops. There's the potential for the city to receive some funds as part of the COVID, whatever relief economy thing. And so what I would say is, my understanding is we still need a, or we could potentially benefit from a second aerator that has a variable speed motor. So if you have the the pamphlet from the previous one, it'd be good to see that dusted off.
Okay.
Where does the money come from?
Well, short term, it comes from the federal government through the Michigan Treasury. Long term, it comes from all the people who pay taxes in the next decades.
This is the American Recovery Act.
The money?
Sorry, what was that?
No, I just said that. So then Fortuna awards these dollars to, and what, based on what criteria?
So the federal government released funds to to all of the states, and I think it was population based.
Yes.
And the the states are responsible for dispersing to to the municipalities. And they have a formula for for how they do, how they're planning that disbursement. And I think Marie was gonna gonna talk about that as about information that we received today is about that as well, but right now, the summary is, we're not a hundred percent sure on how much we're gonna get, but it sounds like the first round is supposed to be dispersed in May. And then the second disbursement is supposed to be sent.
Can't hear you.
I can't hear you.
Can you hear me?
Second disbursement is going to be that way.
And then I believe the second disbursement is Marie sixty days after that or twelve months?
Twelve months.
Twelve months.
Yes, twelve months. And the, as I said before, the state has set up a department to deal with this. The direction just came down from the federal government about the uses and the releasing of the funds today. So there's a couple of webinars coming up and we should know more about that fairly soon.
Thank you.
Other questions for Dan?
I have one very simple question.
Go ahead, Ms. Fisher.
Dan, you were talking about pouring cement. And where does, in First Street Park, where does that cement, where is it now or where is it going to go?
I I think it's got something to do, maybe you can help me, Paul, with a shed that was going to be put up there at First Street Park.
Yeah, it's 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 in the, if you're looking at the park from kind of like the Adair property. It's in the back left hand corner. The idea is that that's going to be the the new location for the porta potty and a shed. The the porta potty right now is just kind of out in the open near the the DTE property. The goal was to kind of make the the that area look a little bit neater by kind of pushing that stuff back and enclosing it.
And the other half of the concrete was out at the water tower. And there was some sidewalk work out there. And then when we release water, when we're gonna do some preventative maintenance on the inside, we we build a spillway that actually gets the water to the storm drain. Like it should have always been, but on the DPW and one of the couple of water workers.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Dan? Okay.
Thank you.
I think unless there is, we don't have any board or commission, I'm sorry, I too, sorry, not meaning to skip over. Our community development manager is up next. Michelle.
Good evening, Sean. Good evening, council. How are you doing?
Good.
Excellent, excellent. There's not a lot of updating since I went on vacation after getting Justin the community development manager report. So I won't have any updates for you, but I'm willing to answer any questions or hear any comments that you have regarding the information that is in my report.
Ms. Griffin?
Thanks. Hi, Michelle. I have two, a comment and a question, I think. So in your general update, section A about epidemic order update, how you've requested an example of a safety plan that would meet the large utter event guidance and I'll share that. I appreciate that. I think that's a great idea and I hope we get something that's helpful. And then the second is a question, and I think it's somewhat answered in the city manager report about the planning commission meeting that happened about the text amendments about the self-storage units. I would like to be able to, I was not able to watch the meeting live, so I I understand there was a presentation given by a resident. I don't know if that was shared with council or shared with the commissioner or anybody in the city offices. Sounds like planning commission meetings, the videos will be online at some point. It would be great if at least that one could make it up. So I would personally like to watch it before we are making a decision on that. I don't know if that's possible.
So the the it will be up. To the best of my knowledge, it's already been downloaded and it's in the recordings folder. And then Mike and I can work with Justin on getting it uploaded. I think you, if I'm not mistaken, Justin's doing council currently. And we're going to do planning commission, but I don't know if they're available for the public yet. I'll defer to Justin on that. If they're not, I will make sure that the video is available for council before you have to take action. Excuse me. Because like I I said in my report, I do anticipate that it'll be on your on your agenda for your second meeting.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, that would be helpful.
And and to to answer the the second part of that question, yes, all of the city council meetings are up and available. And we have the tools to put the PC meetings off. It's just a matter of of doing those next.
Yeah, so yeah, either way, I guess I was forgetting that you, it's possible you could just send the direct link or however, you could send a file to council members or I could ask you for it specifically. But I would be curious to watch that section of that meeting. Thank you.
Michelle, is the is the self-storage facility still pushing for that location?
No, Sean, they they they've withdrawn their request and they've canceled their purchase agreement. They voided the purchase agreement.
Okay, so at this point, it's just the discussion over whether or not that the the ordinance should be amended to include that as a special land use.
Correct.
Okay, I wanted to make sure I was reading it right. Okay, thank you.
It's, as I explained to planning commission and the audience in attendance, the fact of the matter remains that we do not, in any zoning district, have that use. Excuse me.
Understood.
Thank you.
Okay, Michelle, are we all set with the outdoors seating areas? For the various people that need them? Or are we still? Are we still going back and forth with the pub as far as you know?
The pub was issued a a permit for consistent with what they had last year on the sidewalk. Two, four, six, eight, ten seats, ten four tops in the parking spaces, because they're using five spaces like they did last year. And seven four top tables behind their business. They don't like that. They want more. And so so they're they're not following their permit as current.
So part of, part of my question, allow me to free verse a little bit here. Part of the, I've been contacted by Andrea, the wife of Peter who owns the pub, you you're aware of that. Part of the, part of the the concern here is, is whose judgment is it that the tables are spaced appropriately? And whether we're permitting a number of tables or we're actually permitting, you know, something in accordance with health department guidelines. Does our, remind me, does our recently passed outdoor seating area ordinance require a determination of an approved number of of tables? Or are they allowed to have as many as fit it within the current health guidelines?
So Sean, what it, what the ordinance requires is a dimension scaled plot plan or sketch plan. If if what I'm approving currently is based on the six foot separation that the health guidelines require. Excuse me, Paul?
Talk to my dog to get out of here.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should also mention that any business serving alcohol, the Liquor Control Commission requires that as well. And they've even provided the guidelines that the Mr. Michigan Restaurant and Lodging Association has put together. I've circulated that, well, we did this last year for everyone. And and so that's what we were using again this year.
Okay, so, so all right, so we've we've issued the permit there. And then how often do we? So how often do we check to make sure they're within the permit?
So once I issue the permit before they've set anything up, I issue the permit, everyone goes out and sets up. Because I don't always have time to check individually, this year I checked everyone all at one time. Just before I I went on vacation. Everybody's following their permit, but the pub.
Okay.
But they they're just, you have to understand, they're not only not following this outdoor seating area permit. They have their permit for the temporary tent has expired, even though I I I extended it to the end of April for them.
Yep.
They just don't want to.
Yeah, okay, all right. So it's where I thought it was. Okay, you you've summed it up for me. Thank you. Okay, anybody have any further questions for Michelle? Okay, anybody have any further questions for Michelle? Okay, um, our, uh, city manager report by our interim city manager, Justin, are you ready, sir?
Absolutely. Um, so I, I don't have a lot for you outside of, um, what's in, in the packet, but, um, uh, just a couple of things, uh, number one, I am still working on the budget and I'm gonna try and have that out either, uh, tonight or early tomorrow morning. Um, and that'll be, uh, all funds, um, including the general fund, streets, water sewer, um, everything. Um, and, uh, we do have, have that meeting on Wednesday at six. Um, we, we got a little bit of bad news about the community garden. Um, so our DPW went out to, um, install the water service lines. And, um, do, and, and make sure that, that it's tilled and, and everything's put together. But, um, when they were out there, uh, all four members of our DPW, um, ended up with poison ivy. So, um, I've reached out to, um, Paul Levanoff and I've reached out to Plantwise. Um, the folks that we work with to, uh, remove invasive species in Mill Creek Park. Um, and there are some options. Um, but I, I don't know that it's anything that we're going to be able to, to do immediately, um, it's something that we're gonna have to, have to work through. Um, ultimately, when, when we, uh, it seems like when we went out and, and disced, when we basically mass rototilled, um, that area, um, there were some poison ivy roots underneath the ground that got torn up. And so now, um, if, eh, if those roots are allowed to, to continue, um, they will germinate and, and, um, each piece that was chopped up will sprout new poison ivy. So, um, basically, there's a couple of options. One is we can go out and, and do some sort of mass raking to, to remove the roots. Or we can take up, um, a couple of inches of, of that topsoil and lay new topsoil down. Um, and we're, we're, we're gonna be working through that. Um, I just spoke with, with Paul Levanoff and, and Plantwise today about that. So, hopefully we can still get the, the garden open, um, this year without having all of the gardeners impacted by poison ivy. But, um, again, something that we're gonna try and work through.
Paul?
So, uh, are you saying that this Saturday is not gonna be the day that we're gonna try to open the garden and, and people can get in there to do this, their, uh, rototilling and planting and that, it's not prep, prep for that yet?
I, I, I doubt it.
Are you giving me an estimate of two weeks or three weeks or what?
Maybe, maybe Dan has, uh, has some support for, for that.
Um, I'm not sure how long it's gonna be. I mean, I, I talked to two different people than Justin's talked to about the poison ivy problem out there. The reason the DPW didn't see it's because it didn't have any leaves yet. So when they were out there doing all their stuff, um, with the putting that water service line, sitting on the ground, getting in and out of the hole and then rototilling and all that other stuff. Um, two of them got it really bad, to where they had to go to the doctor. And, uh, I mean, from head to toe, everywhere. Um, from what the doctor has told us is that if you're on the medicine for this and you get it again, it's, it's a lot worse. Um, like Justin said, I, I really haven't put any numbers to it or any time, um, thoughts on it, uh, because I, it's the whole area. And then with it re-sprouting itself, we're gonna have to take dirt and roots out of, you know, half of the area and twenty feet of the garden. So I'm hoping to be able to start working on that this week. I don't know offhand, I haven't had a chance to talk to Justin, if we're going to, if this is something that we're gonna let the DPW try to do, or a little busy, we're shorthanded or something, we're gonna have to try to hire out to get it expedited, to try to meet, you know, some kind of deadline by the end of the month. So we'll have to get back with everybody on that when me and Justin have time, um, to look at it and try to put some dates together.
Has, has Oga been informed of this?
I had her out there. Um, we were looking at the raised beds and I was talking to her about our problem last week. Um, yes, and she was really concerned if we were talking about putting some kind of weed killer down there, which that was one of the recommendations I had. But the bad thing with the weed killer is if it doesn't go in through the leaves, it won't kill the roots. So we almost gotta let, if we're gonna go that route with weed killer and then go in and remove the roots because the roots can reseed themselves, so there's, there's a lot to think about. And the whole ground over there is covered with, Oga asked, well, why didn't we have this problem when we originally did this garden? Well, that garden was actually part of that farm's lawn originally. So we went in and mass cleared to move it over. And without the leaves on the poison ivy, we all know what it looks like, it just didn't get noticed, you know, when we were out there doing all that work. But yes, I notified Oga, we met out there and looked at everything and her concern was uh, the gardeners not getting poison ivy from it this year, or maybe one of the options should be, we don't even open it this year. That's what she was talking to me about. And I told her that me and Justin still had some things we need to talk about and figure out if there was other options, posing it completely.
We could rename it to, instead of community garden, the COVID garden, so.
Yeah, like I said, Paul, we've been working really hard to get this open and we did not, obviously, we didn't see that, so.
The community garden, as long as you want to garden, uh, poison ivy.
Yeah, no, I mean, as bad as them guys got it, Paul, I can't imagine.
Oh, I, I, yeah.
I do not want the gardeners getting, getting anything like that.
I understand. Or maybe just, uh, sad as it could be this year. Um, if they don't get it in, I mean, if you don't get certain things in at a certain time, it's not gonna produce any, uh, produce, so there's doesn't sound like it's a good option to try to, you know, open to me, so. Just, uh, I guess just communicate with the people that normally have, that are already applied and have done that to let them know what's going on.
Okay.
Hey Dan, we got the water line in though, right?
Yeah, everything's ready to go.
Maybe you can water the poison ivy so it grows faster.
I'm learning a lot more about poison ivy than I thought I ever did want to know, but I do, I do want everybody safe out there.
Yeah, understood, that's a tough situation.
No doubt about it, and it's not gonna be cheap or the amount of hours it's gonna take to go in there and remove two inches of dirt and make sure the roots are out of there, yeah. We need, there's some thought that's gotta go into this, and me and Justin, we've been calling everybody we know to try to put a plan together. We just, right now, don't have time for the plans, but we'll work on it as soon as we can get a free minute.
Okay, well, I think Paul's comment is apropos, let's make sure that anybody who's applied for a garden plot is aware of what's going on and the timing and
Okay.
the, or, or, or maybe the uncertainty of the timing, whatever, so that they're aware.
Yeah, thank you for the support.
Yep, thanks for working through that, that's a difficult one. Justin, the floor is still yours.
Um, on, on happier news, um, the farmer's market had its opening day, um, both, uh, Saturday and Tuesday. Um, have happened and, uh, have gone well. Um, we, we still have, uh, COVID protocols in place. Um, but, uh, from, from what I'm hearing, everybody is enjoying it and things are going well for the, for the vendors. Um, and our new, new farmer's market manager has been doing a great job. Um, I don't know if anybody has any, any questions about, uh, about my report?
Uh, Ms. Griffin?
Yep, thanks, thanks Justin. Uh, my attempt to make comments in a more timely fashion. Um, I noted your update about the conflict of interest ordinance and I just wanna say that I've appreciated the opportunity to attend the trainings put on by the Michigan Municipal League. And so, to the extent that I can, I would like to sprinkle in a couple of things that I've learned as they become relevant, um, so they're not coming in at the last minute. Uh, and so I just wanted to mention a couple of things that came up at the newly elected officials training that was way back, um, in January, maybe. And he specifically mentioned the Michigan Public Act 196 of 1973, which is the Standards of Conduct and Ethics Act. Which sets standards of conduct for public officers and employees in Michigan and creates a state board of ethics. And he also referenced the Michigan Public Act 317 of 1968, the Conflicts of Interest as to Contracts Act. Which regulates the conduct of public servants in respect to government, governmental decisions and contracts with public entities. I found reading those to be really helpful. I imagine that anything we come up with in our ordinance, um, you know, would be consistent with those, you know, those are laws. Um, so anyways, I, I just, I found those references helpful. Um, and I wanted to make sure I mentioned that at a meeting.
And, and so, Jimmy, can you, can you repeat the, the, the PA public act?
Yeah, so the first one was, so 196 of 1973. And the other was 317 of 1968.
Okay. I do remember talking with, with Scott about, um, the, a, a state, um, public act relating to contracts.
Yeah, it might have been that 317 one, so, and, yeah, I, I found them enlightening and I look forward to seeing the revisions that come back to us, when, whenever that happens, I understand there's a lot going on.
Um, we're, we're hoping to have, have a, have a draft for the next meeting.
Okay, sounds great, thank you.
Okay, Jamie, anything else?
Nope, that's all, thank you.
Sure, Justin, anything else?
Uh, that, that, that's all for me, unless anybody has any questions.
Okay, thanks for that, good report. Um, so my report was in the packet, um, I'll just wanna confirm, so Wednesday we'll plan on adding a discussion on the uh, council vacancy to the workshop number three, where we're gonna discuss draft budget for water sewer and streets. Uh, we'll do the budgeting first and then come to the vacancy, um, so just to affirm that. Um, there was mention of, uh, a survey, Jamie, that you, you put out there. Um, I know that surveys are important to you and gathering public information is important to you, I, I guess I just wanna make sure that any survey that you're putting out there that people know that it's your question and not doing it on behalf of council, I'm not saying that you are, that, that it's unclear or clear, um, but just thought I'd bring that up, I forgot to mention that earlier cuz I became aware of the survey and, uh, I didn't mention it in my intro, so I thought I'd pick it up here on my report. So if you could just be careful of that, I'd appreciate it, that, the timing sometimes throws people off, so. I wanted to mention on, on Saturday, uh, Jamie and Zach and Juan and I were able to be uh, along with Marie Sherry inside uh, the thirty-five fifteen Broad Street space for our city manager public interviews. In my report, I incorrectly called it city council search committee, but it's city manager search committee. And, um, Paul and Donna Fisher were able to participate remotely, Paul for the first interview, Donna for the all three. Um, council has to figure out where to go next with those interviews. Um, I think all three candidates showed various positions of strength. I, I wanted to say our, our interim city manager did a very nice job. Uh, I think one of the external candidates is also very strong. Um, I'm hoping to figure out a way to get this group together. Uh, we may have to do a public meeting. Uh, and hope that, hope that Justin wants to stay home, maybe for a day while we talk about it. Um, in the interim, I'm going to reach out to the search committee members, uh, Mr. Cousins and Mr. Michelle's, as well as Marie. And just gather some thoughts, make sure there's not something that I'm missing, or there could be another good thought out there on, on how to proceed here towards a selection. Um, but I wanted everybody to know that it's, it's my, my goal to keep that moving forward. So if there are ideas on next steps or whatever, uh, please feel free to reach out to me individually. But in the meantime, you can expect that I'm gonna try and organize a, a meeting of the search committee, just to, um, back together and then in all likelihood, I'd like to have a, you know, a council workshop to, to discuss next steps. Um, those names are now in the public and, um, there's no reason why we can't talk about them in the public too if we need to, so. Um, if anybody has any thoughts on that, you know, please connect back up with me. Uh, I am gonna help with, um, Michelle and on this tour of Mill Creek Park. The city of Northville representatives are gonna come do on May twenty-second, uh, that's on the morning, I just wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Over the years, Paul and I have given tours to different groups, different senators, different elected officials from other places, so, um, if anybody wants to be a part of that, you're not necessarily excluded. I don't wanna think anybody's excluded, uh, but I figure they'll probably ask us about the process and taking out the dam and some of the things we did land-wise and grant-wise and, um, permitting-wise, so. I just throw that out there and let everybody know that we're, we're, we've been asked to do that by our community development manager and we're gonna support her in that effort uh, on the twenty-second, which is before our next meeting, so. Does anybody have any questions for me on anything? Uh, I have, um, just started reaching out to some of the student representatives that have come in for our next fiscal year. Um, I'm hoping there's no problem with my going and talking to them and bringing back recommendations on that, I'm gonna do that similar to how we fill the other boards and commissions. Um, I think we've only got six candidates right now and we try to get to eight spots. I might be off one, Justin, I've gotta catch up on email from today or whatever, but, uh, anyway, I'll let people know. I'm hoping to bring those recommendations back here shortly so we can start filling those, those vacancies as well and getting organized there. I think we've had a good year of student activity and certainly want that to continue. I know that, um, council members Fisher and Hubbard worked on some things and we haven't really gotten back to a chance where, for them to give their report. We had asked them to go and, and, um, and meet, uh, so maybe if it's possible at the next meeting, we could carve out just ten or fifteen minutes on an agenda item, Justin, to allow them to provide an update on what they were thinking, so we could catch that up. Uh, so that's timely in terms of, you know, leading into the next group. Jamie, questions, please?
Yep, thanks, uh, thanks for mentioning this thing. My only thought is, and I haven't seen who's applied or anything. Uh, philosophically, principally, I guess, my preference would be, uh, somebody who actually lives in the city of Dexter. I don't know how many of the candidates do, I don't know how that weighs in on your decision. I, I would personally give preference to somebody who lives in the city of Dexter. But I think, as, as it's written, it's anybody in the school district, is that correct?
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we felt that it was important to allow anybody in the school district to participate. Um, you, you know, the, it, we'll see how the final list goes, Jamie, but, uh, the first year we had just enough to fill all the spots we wanted. So we gave a little bit of preference to the seniors on, um, the more prominent positions since they were getting the first run at it. Uh, this past year, we, um, we actually had more applicants than positions and I think I, I recommended that we, we actually add more than just two for some of the committees and the committees were appreciative or, or they were willing to take on more than two in some locations, so. You know, I, I've always been trying to get as many people involved as we can, but, um, the way the, the way the, the policy or whatever it is is written now is that as long as they're in the school district, they're, you know, they're eligible, so I'll keep that in mind though.
Yeah, yeah, I guess I know some boards and commissions have people who are, who live without the jurisdiction, like Parks and Rec, I think does, and maybe there's another board and commission. I think my thought is, well, they have a local municipality that could also welcome them onto their board or committee or their council or whatever it is, but anyways.
Well, we
That's where I'm coming from.
No, I, I hear ya, I hear ya, and I could, I could just say that, um, last year, uh, well, like, for example, Alex lives in Webster Township, you know, Alex is one of our student reps, he's, he's on the call tonight. He was good enough to join us on, on Saturday for the city manager interviews and, um, he was a avid participant on the planning commission, you know, obviously in a non-voting capacity, but he did speak up, I know, last year, a, a couple that I attended is where I got to hear him talk. And he's certainly been a contributor as, as Bella, you know, my goal again is to not exclude if we can, but I'll, I'll keep your comments in mind.
Thank you.
And Sean?
Yeah, yeah, Justin, sorry, yeah, and then Juan.
Uh, ju- just real quick, um, when I did send out the notices to, um, the current student representatives and to let them know that, that, that it was time to reapply, um, I did also, also ask for their feedback. Um, like we had discussed, um, at one of our meetings when, when the topic came up. Um, and a few of the student representatives did provide, um, written feedback.
Great.
One, Donna, or, or
That's good.
The, the group wants to, wants to review and take a look at.
We'll try to get it summarized collectively and make sure everybody, that's shared with everybody. You know, just so we all benefit from the same information. Wow, thanks for waiting.
I guess I just want to say as somebody who. At like in my teen years would have been incredibly interested in in one of these positions. I grew up in a township. The township is much less likely to have a program like this. I just, I don't. Think it's fair to penalize the students based on where their parents live. They have no control over that. And also the other board is ACH.
Okay, appreciate the comments. Like I said, I'm I'm just getting into the process, so.
I just wanted to bring it up as, you know.
Makes sense. I'm following the policy we adopted, so I'll. That's what I'm going forward with at this point in time. But I appreciate all the perspectives on it. It's not an easy thing, so. And I'll 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 share the list. I I don't, it's not a secret. I'll share the list as as a, you know, as I get into it here. Is it okay if we jump over to consent agenda? Are there any council member reports or other otherwise? Sorry, didn't mean to pass over seven. There were none in the packet. Anything from council? Okay, seeing none. Consent agenda, please. There's three items.
Three items on the consent agenda, two hundred and sixty one thousand nine hundred and sixty sixty two dollars and nineteen cents. Setting a public hearing for the millage rate and budget for June fourteenth and setting public, setting a public hearing. For water and sewer ordinance for June fourteenth.
Thank you. Motion by Fisher.
I'll second.
Second by Griffin. Thank you, Jamie. Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, Fisher.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Cousins.
Yes.
Griffin.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Kio.
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Motion carries on those three items. Old Business Item K one, discussion and updates from our city manager on thirty five fifteen. Sort of as a follow up to what Tom Colas presented on.
Yeah, so I just wanted to take an opportunity to share the draft bond resolution. And provide kind of my my list of activities as they relate to thirty five fifteen over the last couple of weeks. I again, I've had I've had meetings with Tom and. Baker Tilly. We had a bond rating meeting with standard standard and cores. So based on that meeting, they are going to recommend a bond rating. If if we do decide to move forward with our bond issuance. I've had a number of meetings with Partners in Architecture over the over the last several weeks. The surveying services are substantially complete. The appraisal services are substantially complete. We did get a a copy of the draft appraisal. But we didn't get it in time to to be included in in the packet. But I can share that with you either. For the work session packet or for the next meeting.
Yeah, please include it in the work session if you could, Justin. Let's get it out there in public.
I can do that. I don't know if anybody has any has any questions about. The bond or about the appraisal or. Any of the meetings that I've had.
Ms. Griffin.
Yep, thanks. The only the RFP that's gone out about the use of space. Has it gone at all to the sun times or? Would the and would it be appropriator is there is the cost prohibitive to do that or? Would there be any reason to?
As 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 a full. Advertisement?
I'm not sure. I think I just saw that maybe the places it was saved and I'm not finding it right now here, the places that were shared with, I don't know if they were all online or social media. I didn't know. So even sometimes like we could just put something, you can post something automatically online and there's no cost to that. I don't know if it's worth putting it on sometimes online as opposed to printed, but. Or get somebody who's on, if there's a journalist on right now, I don't think Doug Martin's on. I think Amy Zinski might be on to nudge them to say, hey, could you include this in your paper?
I I can get in touch with Doug.
Just just as a way to get it more out, because I don't know if you've not, if you maybe haven't heard back from anybody or I don't anyways, if there's value.
As of right now, I've received no, no questions, no, no submitals. Although on the flip side, that 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 isn't unusual when it comes to bids or or RFPs. A lot of times they come in at the very last minute.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, we still got a week, right?
Correct.
Zach, thanks for waiting. Ms. Griffin, you are done, right?
Yep, thank you.
Yep, okay. Zach, your turn, sir.
I just wanted to confirm is the the plans and the probable costs that was prepared by partners and architect based on. The inspection by the structural engineer and mechanical engineer.
It was.
So then my. You don't have back fully are, and it sounds like this might be done yet, but the the appraisal. The phase one environmental site assessment and the survey.
Also, the 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 survey is is substantially complete. The the yeah, the only thing that I'm waiting on in the list is phase one.
Do we know and that'll be back?
So so they've they've been working on it for a couple of weeks now, so. Hopefully, in the next next week or two.
Okay, I and I would say. Based on the timeline, my my recollection is we have to say go or no go at the next meeting. Because we run out of our our initial purchase agreement period. Is that correct?
Yeah, so so if 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 the intent is still to purchase thirty five fifteen and you want to meet the original. Due diligence deadline, then yes, the the next meeting, we we do have to approve the. Bond authorizing resolution to to keep moving forward.
All right, and. Have we heard anything back from the property owners or their agents about the. Items on the. Do the improvements for the building?
So I'm actually meeting with Scott Munzel tomorrow. To talk about how about the next steps for that what that process looks like. I I sent the list over to Jeff Evans at Swisher. And it's my understanding that he's presenting that to the property owner, but I think that they want to talk about. Kind of what what that means, what implications that that list has and what the next steps are. For moving forward. Whether that's whether that's negotiating over the items or. You know, then coming back with a list that says, you know, we'll do these things. Those are things that I want to talk with with our city attorney about.
Okay, I it seems like there's still a lot, at least for this body to see and touch, so I would be very supportive of approaching them and saying we. We need a little bit more time. Here's some more earnest money. So that we can get these things sorted out. Not a lot of time because I I don't like to to sit. But I just wanted to throw that out there and be happy to offer a motion if it's necessary or desirable.
Zach, are you? Are you comfortable with? The interim city manager and the attorney? And if you want a council member or somebody interacting with. The the current property owner relative to those. Those items. I mean, in terms of, I mean, in terms of, you know, you know, potentially negotiating or.
Yeah, just I'm I'm thinking. This body traditionally hasn't liked to take action on big items when we the first time we see it. And there's still a lot up in the air. You know, we haven't seen the appraisal. We we have probable costs. Are we going to get price adjustments? So I'm thinking to, I want us to be able to all sleep comfortably, and if that means we put down some more earnest money. For sixty days or thirty days or whatever, so we can all be confident in the information, but yes, with. As far as meeting, that sounds like a good plan with the agents or the owners.
I I just I just know that there's conversations and that the, you know, the the property owner has been extremely cooperative, obviously, and, you know, letting us use the room and. I mean, so I think that the more we can allow those conversations to occur. Without us having to go into closed session and all that other stuff, I think that that's okay from my perspective. I just wanted to make sure. I'm asking you because you're. In dialogue with me now, but I'm really asking council, everybody okay with that? Those conversations continue at the city manager level, so to speak?
That's fine.
I'm I'm comfortable with it too. I've told Justin if he has any questions, I'm available, but obviously I wanted to make sure council's aware of what's going on, so.
Well, I'm all set then. Thank you.
Okay. Justin, any other updates on that process? Let's get the appraisal out to everybody and then push the the phase one folks to tell them they gotta get done. Do we do we want to? Do we want to do a motion for potential additional? Earnest money to acquire additional time? Should we decide we need that or do we want to just wait until next meeting and? I mean, we can wait next meeting to do that also, I think. We'll just wait till next meeting and see where we're at. How's that sound?
Well, well, so so. If we if we do wait until next meeting. And the property owner comes back and says, no, I'm not willing to give you more time, that 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 could be an issue.
Okay, well then, do we want to, what what remind me how much earnest money we put down? Ten?
Ten.
So do we, you know, want to offer another five or another ten to to hold another? What what time period would we want for that? I'm not really trying to stretch this out, but I do want to make sure that people have the appropriate time to review what they want to review.
Sixty days. With similar terms.
Depending on when we get the the information back, right, Zach? I mean, if it's going to come in after the date, right?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm I'm helping with the the suggestion, maybe somebody can own, but. Is there, could there be a motion made to authorize the city manager? Direction to pursue additional to giving additional earnest money in amount of ten thousand for another sixty days if it's needed, if it looks like. Based upon, you know, certain information not coming in by the time we put the next packet together. Okay, who wants to take it? Okay, Donna and Paul, is that good?
Fine.
Okay, motion by Donna, second by Cousins. Any other discussion on that?
I just wanted to point out that we had three council members go to make the same motion for facility purchase. I want to make sure that's documented in the minute somewhere.
Okay, please, Ms. Jones, if you would, please call the vote on the motion to authorize the city manager. Up to ten thousand to if he needs it for additional earnest money to pursue sixty days additional time with the property owner. Should the items that we're waiting on not come in timely, by the I E. by the next packet deadline.
Okay. Griffin.
Yes.
Michelle.
Yes.
Fisher.
Yes.
Hubbard.
Yes.
Cousins.
Yes.
Kio.
Yes. Thank you for that, everyone. Good discussion on your old business. We are now down to new business item L one. Which is the consideration of the proposal from O H M advisors for design and construction engineering. For Dexter Crossing roadwork in an amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty four thousand three hundred. I'm looking for a hand or a motion. Somebody wave a pencil. Ms. Fisher, I see, and then.
Yeah, yep, I'll make that motion.
Yep.
Okay, so motion Fisher, second Cousins. Okay, Mr. Breyer, discussion?
Yeah, so um, as we've discussed, we we had originally planned to third and broad this year. Unfortunately, there have been statewide communication issues with M dot railroad. Who we need the blessing of before we can move forward with. The the roadwork there. So with that looking like it's going to be an extra year project. We didn't necessarily want to get behind in all of the roadwork that we do have to do or or we do want to do. So we're proposing to move Dexter Crossing roadwork forward to this calendar year. And. O H M has has provided a scope of services to assist with design, engineering, bidding and and construction oversight. Which would allow us to get the project complete by by fall. It's a it's a fairly aggressive timeline, but we think that it's it's something that we can accomplish. And I don't know if Patrick, you want to talk about, you know, some of the the specifics of. What will go into the roadwork?
Sure, thank you, Justin. Thank you, council. So this particular area of Dexter Crossing has been on the city's radar. Probably for about five years now. Back in two thousand sixteen, working with Kurt and Dan, we went out and did some. Exploratory coring out in the sub, just to kind of keep an eye on some areas that appear to be failing more quickly than we would expect. Based on the the service or excuse me, the age of the roadways in that particular area. And it was basically discovered at that time, there was some issues with the asphalt thickness and then some of the aggregate base. We also had some some concerns about. So with that in mind, this project's been on the books, is something that would happen again for about five years. And so with, as Justin mentioned, with some of the difficulties we've been having with M dot Office Rail. And getting a final permit for our outlet for our third and Broad Street project. This was one we were able to bring quickly back to the surface. Working with with Dan and and Justin to identify this as a project, so. What we've are looking to do is is basically go out and do a what we call a log of the of the streets. Identifying where the problems are. We're also doing some additional geotechnical investigation. To really get a better understanding of what some of the base issues are or if the asphalt is the issue. And what we'll use that for is basically putting together our bidding documents. Which will inform the contractor to work. The work itself is really going to work for the most part within the curbs. The curbs are in fairly good shape. There are a few areas of disreplacement. But the pavement's obviously the the main issue is. So we'll be doing a little bit of spot curb repair, but for the most part, we'll be sticking between the curbs. Which should keep the the cost relatively light in terms of how much road we can do. We'll bid the work with basically our expectation of what we could get done within the budget. But if there are additional opportunities to potentially stretch that out more, the contract is set up in a way that we can we can add. Additional areas if we need to. That's of course something that we would bring back to council. Is is just to mention pretty aggressive schedule on this, so our goal is to really get this thing out to bed within the next few weeks. Early June is kind of our timeframe for that. We'll also highlight a, just I'm just gonna kind of go through the form that was also included. Working with with Justin and Dan, we've kind of talked about how our projects typically follow a similar process. But being a little more upfront about what our expectations are as we go through the designing construction process relative to things like. Community engagement, talking with the community, having meetings, public meetings and engaging utilities, that type of thing. So within there, you can kind of see, we've included that project form, which we expect you'll see on every project going forward at a council level. And and we we hope to kind of show that at the beginning, but then also at the end to kind of show any areas that we added things or changed things throughout the process. With the goal of being, you know, just continual process improvement if there are things that, you know, that maybe we didn't account for. In the early scoping, just to make sure those things, we are building on that the next time we do a project. The other thing we've included is just the C I P. Because a lot of times these projects do start out in the C I P. This is just one last check to kind of see. You know, where that's initial C I P budget number was versus what actually the project was in yet. So again, this is something that you'll see going forward on 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 these council items, just to give you a little more idea about how we. uh, idea about how we structure these projects, not only on the design side, but also, uh, working with the community that might be affected by it. So that'll open up to questions.
Uh, Ms. Griffin?
Yep, thanks. I'm sorry, where, where in here does it talk about the plans for community engagement or the timing of that? I'm, I think I missed.
Page, page 104.
Page 104. Okay, thank you.
And so there's not actually a date on there, but my thought is that that's probably gonna happen, um, sometime after bidding, um, we're gonna have a little bit of a, a timeframe there where we're waiting for contracts to be signed. Um, but that'd be a great time to go meet with the community and tell them a little bit about, you know, what the, the schedule's going to be, what it's gonna look like when the work's happening. Uh, especially in a project like this where we're basically gonna be taking the pavement out, uh, still an active neighborhood, we have to, um, talk through with the residents about how that uh, is dealt with on a, on a, you know, daily basis, things like trash, um, you know, mail, things like that. Um, luckily, this should be outside of the window of, of, uh, school. Um, so we shouldn't have to worry too much about that, but, um, that, that's basically our, our ideas. Let's have that meeting sometime, uh, right after we take those bids in, in June.
And you talk to the people who live on the streets immediately affected?
Yeah, well, well, generally speaking, what we do on that is, uh, we obviously identify everybody that's touching it. Uh, and then when there's a little bit of radius for anybody, uh, in the median area, Justin can speak to it, but it's usually, you know, within a hundred feet or so, um, beyond like the, the final limits of the project.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Yep, and then we'll, we'll also create a, a, um, we'll, we'll add this to our roads page of the website, um, and we can help keep track of the project and the different stages on there. Um, and then, um, for, I think it was Grand Street, um, we created a Grand Street, um, email update list, um, where we would send updates to, to those residents as different, different, um, points in the project hit.
Okay.
I would, I would suggest that, um, maybe we include the homeowners association representative, or at least their, their board as an invite, just because they can help communicate within the sub also. For, you know, mainly to advise the, the people that don't live on those streets to not use them, you know, to the extent possible. Okay, so Patrick, thank you for your team's good work on that, and, um, I think this would be good to get, get checked off. Uh, I do notice there's a, we're carrying a CIP budget of 608, uh, and the early estimate is 575, so that's good. That sounds like you're hoping it's gonna be less than what we had carried in the plan. Dustin, what are we carrying in our, what are we using in our, um, street forecast?
Uh, that, remind me? That, 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 the, uh, the number that was included in, in the, um, devaluation form, the, uh, I think we have, uh, 35,000 set aside for this current fiscal year, and then, um,
The ninety?
Ninety, yeah.
Okay.
For the next fiscal year.
Okay, great, great. Okay, so a motion by Fisher, second by Cousins, uh, any further discussion on this? Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve.
Fisher?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. That's a good step for a project this year. Uh, new business item L2 is consideration of a settlement and mutual release agreement with the State Department of, of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy regarding the city's National Pluton Discharge Elimination System Permit. This is the motion everybody's been waiting for. This is like twenty years in a running, right, or something?
Yeah.
Exactly. Approval of the proposed settlement and mutual release agreement with Eagle regarding the city's National Pluton Discharge Elimination System Permit and authorize Mayor Kyo to sign it on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Zach. Motion by Michelle's, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Second by Ms. Fisher. Justin, I know you have some invited guests from F and V. I guess I'm, I'd like to ask Dan if it's okay. Dan, you okay with assigning this thing?
Um, all of us at the wastewater treatment plant feel very comfortable, um, our attorneys and everybody that's been working on this for a number of years, uh, and we have Kyle here, one of our attorneys, if you have any questions for him. Um, it's the best we can do right now.
Yeah, I, I, to, to kind of add on that, I think, un- unfortunately, this is, this is a, um, this is us saying, uh, this is over for now. Yep.
Okay. This gives Ann Arbor twenty-five years to decide if they want to give us some of their limits? Is that what you're saying?
Or, 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 or other possible solutions.
There is other possible solutions.
Yeah.
That's one. My friends in Ann Arbor love me. No, it's all good. Okay, well, Kyle, thanks for your, your team's good work on this. Is there anything that hasn't been said that you think we should know that's in here?
No, no, I, I echo those brief comments, but I, I think those are true. It's over for now at least, and um, hopefully we utilize this next twenty-some years to figure out a solution so that, uh, we never get in this jam again with Eagle.
Okay.
Out of curiosity, does anyone know why Chelsea's number is so high? I, I didn't believe our population was that far off. You just got a lot of phosphorus in their water over there?
I, I'm not exactly sure which particular number, but yeah, it has to do with how much they discharge. Um, you know, it's not necessarily based on population at this time, it's their affluent discharge. Um, and there's a big formula that Eagle uses when they make these total maximum daily loads. It's a formula set by statute that they have to follow essentially.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve the, um, settlement mutual lease agreement.
Okay, Cousins?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Uh, new business item L3 is consideration. Kyle, thanks for joining us. The folks from F and V, I think I saw Blair and Elaine. Thanks for joining us. Um, new business item L3, sorry, consideration of the road closure permit for the Dexter Ann Arbor run. I can take a motion if somebody wants to make one.
I'll make that motion if we allow it.
Okay, my, motion by Cousins to permit the run. Is there a second?
I'll say it.
You guys see your hand?
Yep, I'll say it.
Thanks, appreciate that. Okay, discussion, um, Paul, do you want to say anything about it? Or you want to turn over to Justin?
Yeah, I, I think, well, yes, if we need to.
Justin, go ahead.
Uh, I was just gonna say, uh, we also have Doug Goodhue, um, the, the applicant, uh, on the line tonight. Um, so if anybody has any, any specific questions about the, the event or its setup, um, you might be able to assist with, with some of those answers. Um, you did, uh, Mr. Good, you did provide, um, a, a copy of the, their COVID plan for the event, um, which was included in the packet, um, along with, um, the application and, um, other specifics and details about the event.
Okay, Mr. Michelle's?
Uh, I just want to say that I appreciate the attention to detail in the COVID plan. Um, and based on that, it appears like it's a very low-risk, um, event for the city.
Uh, Ms. Griffin?
Yep, thanks. Uh, with respect to the COVID plan, uh, I think there's, I think there's just a typo where we originally, uh, intended to have the event on June the sixth, twenty twenty twenty-one, or twenty twenty-one. I'm guessing it's because things have changed, um, in short periods of time. And then on page one thirty-one, where they talk about the field size, they mentioned that the normal field capacity is sixty-five hundred participants. The breakdown doesn't sum to that, to sixty-five hundred. It sums more to the forty-two fifty, so, again, it's minor detail, it's not going to influence my decision to support the event. Thank you.
Good catches, fair enough. Does Doug want to make any comments, uh, since he's joined us, or? And then we're not catching Doug?
Yes, here I am. Uh, I just wanted to thank everybody. Um, that's just a typo where we originally, uh, intended to have the event on June the sixth, and, uh, we made a arrangements with the City of Ann Arbor, uh, to move the event to August the fifteenth, and that just wasn't changed, and, uh, we did, we did put our numbers on. Uh, w- we are reducing the field this year, our total field for all of our, uh, our events down to the forty-two, although it seems like we're running a little bit ahead right now with the registration, so, you, you know, it may, may go up a couple of hundred people or something, but it's still going to be about in that range, and so. And this is, uh, it's exciting for us. This is our forty-seventh annual event, where almost all of the starting lines for that whole forty-seven years have been on Baker in, uh, you know, in Dexter, so, uh, just to continue on with the event, uh, is a very exciting factor that we're getting back, somewhat back to normal from where we were at last year, where we had to go just virtual only.
Very good. Thanks for joining the meeting and providing, uh, the detail that you have.
Thank you. Thank you to the council and to you, Mr. Mayor.
You're, you're welcome. Other council questions or comments on this item? Okay, Ms. Jones, if you would please, uh, call the vote to approve the road closure permit for the Dexter Ann Arbor run.
Okay, Fisher?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries. Uh, new business item L4 is, uh, consideration of the park use permit request for yoga in the park.
I'll make it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fisher. Motion by Ms. Fisher?
Support.
Support by Cousins? Come back Cousins, please get that down. Okay, um, questions, uh, or Justin, watch it, lead us through the packet a little bit?
Sure, so, um, this is, uh, a, an annual request. Um, the, this group ho- hosts, uh, yoga in the park in, uh, Milk Creek Park South. Um, typically, it's, it's every Saturday, uh, through the summer. Um, they've, uh, provided additional information on their, uh, code plans, which is, uh, specifically setting up cones and rows, so that way people are separated six feet apart. Um, normally, um, these sorts of, of park use permits, um, are approved administratively. Um, but since we've been discussing a lot of our park use permits and road closure permits, um, at the council level, um, I thought it was appropriate to, to bring this one as well, uh, specifically, uh, as we are continuing to deal with, with COVID.
Yep, thank you for that, Justin. Uh, Zach, I see your hands up. I hope I didn't miss it from the last time, the last.
Um, I just wanted to confirm, uh, with staff that there's nothing on our books that prevents us from making approvals for entities that we're in litigation with?
I, it, it does not. We've, we've, um, allowed them, uh, the use every year, um, as we've been in, in litigation, so. I, I, I don't see that there's, there's any, any conflict with, with our current litigation.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Mr. Gilbert?
Um, was, was there a number of participants expected or a participant limit that I glanced over? Or if, if not, would it make sense to include that in the approval, if it is approved?
Um, I don't, I don't believe that there was a participant number listed in, in the permit.
I, I think it's typically around forty to fifty, if, in my estimation from seeing that event, if I can recall.
Depends a lot on the weather.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, Paul. Absolutely. Okay, any further questions? Okay, seeing none. Uh, Ms. Jones, please call the vote to approve the use of the park use permit for the yoga in the park.
Okay, Hubbard?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Cousins?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Kyo?
Yes. Okay, thank you. That concludes our new business items for this evening. Uh, we're down to council comments, and, uh, I'm gonna start with Mr. Gilbert, please.
I have no comments tonight, thank you.
Thank you, and thanks again for participating on Saturday. Isabella on?
Oh, yeah, I am.
Hi, Bella.
Hi, everyone. Sorry for showing up late. I had a soccer game.
It's okay. How'd you do?
Ah, it was rough. It was a rough game today. It was, um, a friendly against Mercy, so it was, uh, but yeah.
Any comments tonight?
Uh, no, I don't have any.
Okay, uh, Mr. Cousins?
I'm tonight, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Fisher?
I don't have any tonight either, Sean.
Okay, Ms. Griffin?
Yeah, I have a couple of things, thanks. Uh, in the consent agenda, when we were talking about the water sewer, uh, increases, it mentioned that those were informed by some reports, and we'll be talking about, uh, well, that part of the budget on Wednesday. So I was just wondering if those reports informing those increases would be included in that packet. I think that would be helpful to see. Um, I had shared an email with Justin and Cece, uh, John on it. I, I'm still on some Ann Arbor, City of Ann Arbor mailing list, and they had shared uh, an advertisement for a public meeting. Now I'm forgetting even what the heck it was for. Uh, maybe improvements to their wastewater treatment plant or something like that, and so they were inviting public comment, and it, it was separate from a public hearing, and it was, it was a specific advertisement saying, we're about to spend this money, here's what this looks like when it comes to millage taxes, et cetera. And given in the past we've talked about, uh, or some council members have expressed an interest in engaging the public about the potential purchase of the city office, I thought it was a good example of what a targeted message to the public might look like. So maybe that's something that could appear in the packet. Next time I didn't, I didn't submit it in time for this packet, and I didn't think to bring it as a council report. Um, so if that could be in the packet next time, I think that would be helpful, maybe under council report. And then I do just want to, um, address Sonam's comments. I appreciate, um, your comments, and I'm happy to have a conversation with you outside of, outside of a meeting. Um, I do, and, and, uh, mayor, your comments about making sure, extra, extra sure that people understand that the surveys are, are from me, I will certainly do that. Um, and again, I just want to emphasize that this is, I see it as my way to go virtually door-to-door. It's, you know, I, I would love to be able to physically go door-to-door on any particular question that I think seems like there is, uh, conflicting viewpoints on council. Um, so I will do my best to make sure that it's clear how and why I'm using that, and that I'm not speaking or requesting information on behalf of council. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Um, last, but, I don't know, I'm sorry, uh, we'll do Hubbard, we'll talk, go in alphabetical order, Hubbard and then Michelle's.
Nothing, thanks.
Uh, Zach?
Um, just want to say that, yeah, this is, it's been a tough week. My stomach has been nuts as I do internal debates on this. Um, but on a lighter note, can someone please go knock on Mr. Murphy's door tomorrow morning and let him know that he's, are getting tended to?
Yes, absolutely.
Maybe we can do that.
Or may, maybe with a long pole or something, so there's no distancing issues, but that's it, thank you.
Actually, we got a couple people out that I want to talk to tomorrow, so, and Mr. Murphy's one of them.
Bring the truck with some lights, then.
That's what I'm gonna do. There's been a lot of questions since we started painting marks out there, so there's gonna be a lot of happy residents out there.
John, can I ask one question?
Sure.
Um, Jamie, how do you determine where you send your survey? Uh, cause I didn't get one, and, uh, would have felt better if somebody said, what's the survey? And I would have said, oh, rather than, I don't know what you're talking about. So how do you determine that? Your sample?
Right, yeah, so, yeah, it's not, I'm not drawing any sample. Um, I'm doing my best to distribute it in the means that I know how, and it's an online survey. So right now I'm restricted to online forms of communication. It's not, it's not a paper survey. Um, I'd love to mail something, or like, it's, you know, go physically door-to-door. So right now, the avenues I use to distribute it, I, uh, maintain a, a small email list of people. maintain a small email list of people who've expressed interest in receiving updates from me. It goes to them. I posted on two local Facebook groups. They're private groups, but they're one of them has over 2,000 people, I think, in it. And they're people who are generally interested in that sort of information and that conversation. And then I've also, I posted the Sun Times News has an area where you can post online event updates or other messages to the community. You never know who's going to see what, where. Oh, and I also posted on Nextdoor. So Nextdoor, it's it's another social media app that's tied to geographic location. I'm open to suggestions if there are other avenues. Again, it's a limited approach because it's online. I, again, you know, the platform I'm using is one that I cannot encourage or discourage the city from using. As I mentioned before, I have a conflict of interest when it comes to this particular platform. You know, I think in the future, if the city were to consider this platform or one like it, I think adding something to the city's email list would definitely, you know, broaden the reach and consistent with email updates and things like that. But I don't, I'm not privy to that, that, you know, I'm acting on my own as an individual council member. So I'm doing yeah, what I can with available.
I was just wondering how you
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks for asking.
Okay, that concludes council comments. We're down to item N, which is non-arranged participation. I see at least one hand, Cole on a friendly face. Welcome.
Hey, Cole Miller, some 6544. I wanted to refrain from commenting. I think a lot of good has been said and then I don't know if there's a way to divorce what I feel might be my informed perspective from the real situation that others have pointed out. You know, people are involved and I didn't realize there was a hesitation on council until the meeting began this evening. And as the process seems to be ongoing, I'm reluctant to speak because the decision belongs with council and I hope my comments won't prejudice your judgment. I'm not sure that it's realistic for the the current question, as others have mentioned, that it's it's the, whether it's realistic that in the current current process with the vacuum, the vacancy. Whether we can really divorce those issues and is the ask more whether the process changes for this time for this vacancy or only looking forward. And I'll be looking forward to the discussion on Wednesday for that. Or do we want to change the the process before locking in the council member? Is the process flawed in as much as there are council members who without wanting to put words in people's mouths, may feel that they should have a more discussion or a larger role in choosing or simply more discussion about who to hire. Somebody who's going to be a coworker, somebody who's supposed to represent the city and make judgment calls on behalf of the city. So having a more lengthy public discussion, even just at the work session of the process, if not the candidates themselves, seems like something council would like to do. I think Zach framed the discussion of the criteria in a way that I understand in as much as a past election can be useful, but a hazy factor to use. And there's plenty of considerations if and when you're taking it into account, including vote spreads, numbers of candidates, incumbency, what issues were part of the campaign. One might consideration consideration might be the length of time left on the term and the appointment for this length of time might it might not be preferred to have a two-year appointment versus a one-year appointment and or a special election. I wasn't aware of the survey. I was just reading it now during the meeting. The way I read it, it seems more in response to the the comment that was made. The only council comment that was made last last week by council member Cousins, who raised the issue of the previous election and had a dialogue with Mayor Kyo about the history of appointments. And we all might wish now that there had been more discussion or a variety of opinions on the process offered at the last meeting. And that in turn might have led to a different set of questions in in the survey, but I see it that way rather than reading it as slanted or advocating a particular method. Again, given now we're now talking about a process in progress with actual people who applied the discussion, it would be difficult to abstract the discussion from of the process from the people involved. But the question seems to be, was the current process acceptable for the current vacancy? Allowing for somewhat more discussion on Wednesday, something that might want to be formalized in later processes. Or whether we need to design something else for now. Anyway, whatever does is decided, I'm available for my phone or email if any council members would like to chat.
Thank you, Cole. Joseph Faro.
He's muted.
Yeah, I'm waiting for Justin on video. There we go.
Thank you, Justin. When you look at the council rules, if I can offer up a suggestion, a long time ago, I remember somebody had said, you know, people come to present and speak at council to get an approval, for instance, the Run Tonight or the Eagle lawsuit. That they can go, I think it was Lisa Almendinger used to say, we used to watch her watch and she'd say, okay, it's been an hour and 45 minutes. You guys haven't voted on anything yet. And the people that came had to wait quite a long time and it just seems like it would be possible to move those approvals that went very quickly. I think it went through all the new business and old business in about 20 minutes as opposed to the hour and a half for the rest of the meeting. And it seems if you potentially put something between non-arranged participation or right after communications so that you could get any public comment just before, in case somebody wanted to comment. And then you could get those people done and get them on their way, maybe within the first half hour, 45 minutes of the meeting. And not have to potentially have them wait and listen to discussion they might not potentially be interested in. So as far as the election stuff or the election stuff, the 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 process for the choosing of seat. I look forward to seeing how things turn out on Wednesday. So thanks, everybody. I appreciate you all taking time out of your schedule to speak with me over the course of the last few days about any concerns that you might have. Anything else comes up, can we call anytime and thanks.
Thanks, Joe. Justin, am I seeing any other hands out there? Oh, Sanam.
Thank you. I I wear many, many hats and sometimes I even confuse, I am confused of the hats I'm wearing. So I want to thank the council on behalf of Dexter Crossing for approving the project for for the road. It's something that we have been looking forward to it for many years and will make the the neighbors very, very happy to see at least the conversation is a starting and and the process is a starting. We have our annual meeting on June 10, actually. So if there is anything that you would like council or the the staff that would like communicated to the neighbors, we can certainly put that in in the report. We also have monthly newsletters going out to the neighbors and we can certainly include any communication that you would like as part of that. And as Sean suggested, the HOA board and myself would be very happy to participate in any conversation and discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Sanam. Thanks for attending the meeting and your comments. I think that concludes our non-arranged participation. So I'll seek a motion for adjournment and wish everybody well. See you Wednesday.
Well moved.
By Fisher, second by Cousins, was it?
No.
Oh, who said second?
I will say it though.
All right, I need a second. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying hi, please.
Hi.
Hi.
Those opposed? We are adjourned, everyone. Thank you very much for your
Have a good night.
Take care.